Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the West Orange Board of Education meeting and welcome to West Orange High School. We've already had the roll call and pledge of allegiance and now we're moving right into public session. Okay. May I have a motion, please, for the closed and public meeting minutes of October 30th and November 6?
I'll move that.
Second.
Was anyone absent? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Reske, superintendent's reports, board reports.
Thank you very much. We're going to begin with our financial audit presentation tonight. That is going to be done by Donna Javid, who is a partner at Lurch, Vincy, and Higgins. Donna, I'm going to turn it over to you. Please.
Thank you. Okay. As mentioned, I'm here to present the audit for the fiscal year end of June 30th, 2017. As you're all aware, the annual audit is required by statute. I'm happy to report the audit, as well as all the other filings, have been filed with all the required regulatory agencies. The audit itself actually produces two documents, the first being the comprehensive annual financial report, which is the financial statements and the related footnote disclosures. The second report is called the auditor's management report on administrative findings. This is the report that documents any audit findings and recommendations. If I may, I'll start by going through the auditor's opinion, which is found in the comprehensive annual financial report, if anyone would like to follow along, on page one. We have audited the financial statements of the governmental activities, the business-type activities, each major fund, and the remaining fund information of the West Orange Board of Education as of and for the fiscal year end of June 30th, 2017. Management's responsibility for the financial statements. Management is responsible for the preparation and fair presentation of the financial statements in accordance with accounting principles generally accepted in the United States of America. As the auditor, our opinion is to express an opinion on these financial statements based on our audit. We conducted our audit in accordance with auditing standards generally accepted in the United States of America, standards applicable to financial audits, in accordance with government auditing standards, as well as audit requirements prescribed by the Office of School Finance, Department of Education for the state of New Jersey. I'm happy to report the district has once again received what we call an unmodified audit opinion, also known as a clean opinion, which means, in our opinion, financial statements present fairly in all material respects. So if I may, I'll move on to the financials. Again, if anybody on the board would like to follow along, I'm in the comprehensive annual financial report on page 20, which is the balance sheet of the governmental funds. The first fund is the general fund. This is the chief operating fund of the district. This is where the majority of the transactions are accounted for. As you'll see, the district ended the year with total fund balance of 1.2 million in the general fund. This is a decrease of approximately $3.5 million from the prior year. I'll go through the components of the fund balance, the first being capital reserve, which sits with 4,002.09. This is money the district has put aside to fund local share of projects in the Long Ridge Facility Plan. Under assigned fund balance, there's purchase on order of 453,907. These are the open orders that were placed prior to year-end but were not liquidated until the 1718 year. $900,000 of the fund balance has been designated for use in the current year, that's the 1718 budget that you're in, leaving you with unassigned fund balance of a deficit of 143,511. It's important to note that this 143,000 does not include approximately $2.6 million of delayed state aid payments. As I'm sure you're all aware, the state actually withheld your entire June state aid payment as well as extraordinary aid, so you don't receive that until the following fiscal year. So on a budgetary basis, your unassigned fund balance is 2,476,380. It's important to note that this $2.4 million is below the 2 percent maximum you're permitted to hold. It's about $948,000 less than 2 percent. The second fund you'll see there is your special revenue fund. This is a fund that accounts for your NCLB, your IDA, and other state and federal projects. The third column, the capital projects fund, is the fund that's used to account for your energy savings incentive program, as well as a lease purchase for the purchase of school vehicles. The fourth column is your debt service fund. This is the fund that accounts for the principal interest payment on your bonds. You'll see you have a fund balance of $47,000 at year-end. This represents savings that you realize as a result of doing refundings of some existing debt that you had. So if I may, I'll move on to the recommendations. They're found in the smaller of the two books, which is the auditor's management report, and I will be looking at page 14, which is the summary of the recommendations. So our first recommendation comes under financial planning and accounting reporting. We're recommending that controls be enhanced to ensure that overtime rates are properly calculated and that employees are paid at correct rates. We noted instances where certain employees were not paid at the correct per diem rate in calculating their overtime. Secondly, greater care be exercised to ensure retroactive salary amounts paid are correctly calculated by district personnel. While testing the retropayments, we noted exceptions where people were paid the improper retro calculations. It's also important to note the district actually accrued a liability of $314,000 in connection with these retro pay corrections. Thirdly, all NCLB carryovers be submitted to the Board of Education for their approval by formal resolution. The district receives federal funding, one of programs being Title I under NCLB, and the federal government requires that any time you modify your federal budgets, that has to be done by board resolution. So if you have a carryover of a prior year, the board has to take action to approve that being carried into the next year. School purchasing program. It's recommended that specific vendors utilized by the district for contracts in excess of the bid threshold awarded through cooperative purchasing agreements be formally approved by board resolution. Although previously the board did authorize the district to utilize cooperative purchasing agreements such as ed data, state contracts, previously the district was not specifically doing by resolution individual contracts in excess of bid threshold. The statute requires any time you have a contract that's over the bid threshold and is exempt from public bid, the board has to formally approve that contract by resolution individually. Under student body activities, you'll note that next to these recommendations under student body activities is an asterisk, which means that these were also cited in last year's audit as well. First, subaccounts should be reviewed and chances made to cover deficits. In addition, subaccounts should be reviewed to determine if, for valid student activity purposes. Just to clarify what we mean by subaccounts, clubs and activities in the student activities are referred to as subaccounts. Pre-number receipts should be utilized and properly reflect composition of funds collected. Two signatures be required on all checks issued from the Washington Elementary School account. Student activity accounts only be utilized for purposes connected with student-related activities and clubs. Payment authorization request forms contain all required proper approval signatures. Supporting documentation be obtained for all dispersments. And continued efforts be made to limit reimbursements made to individuals. On page 15, under pupil transportation, we're recommending that internal control procedures over the preparation of DRTRS, which is the district report of transporter resident students. Reporting be reviewed and enhanced to ensure special education students are properly reported, with instances noted where regular education students were classified as special ed. Facilities and capital assets. We're recommending that all current year additions be properly reflected in the district's capital asset inventory report. We cited approximately $307,000 of unrecorded additions, which primarily related to capital project fund acquisitions for vehicles. As I noted, the items under student activities were repeat recommendations. It's important to note that these recommendations, we do not consider any of them to be significant deficiencies or material weaknesses, they're matters of noncompliance. I have reviewed the corrective action plan that's on the agenda for your consideration this evening, and I find the methods of implementation set forth to be acceptable. At this time, if the board has any questions, I would be more than happy to answer them.
Thank you. Thank you for all your hard work on this. As you stated in your recommendations, items with asterisks are repeated. Is there a suggestion from you as to how we can deal with this, because it does happen quite often?
Can we just make a comment and let Mr. Calavano kind of address how things are going to be done, just so the public understands what's going to happen? Please.
So as we look at the recommendations, the first one with the overtime rates, I don't know what happened, but we actually paid the rates. The rates were lower than what they should have been. We corrected that when we did the actual retroactive pay for the group at that time. So now we have procedures put in place that when we change overtime rates on July 1st, then we have somebody else within the department check that person's work, so that should not happen again. The retroactive salary amounts being paid, again, you know, this was a huge task. We only had four weeks to complete. There was a host of employees who were eligible for longevity during the '16-'17 were inadvertently missed at the June 30th payable. We did catch it, and they were paid on July 14th. The carryovers, we know that carryovers have to be approved each month or each year. The director, there was a delay in that school year. The director talked with the individual from the DOE, and he indicated, you know, make the change and submit it. She didn't realize, or she was assuming that we didn't have to go for board approval. So now, she's clear that we definitely need board approval, and we are creating a list in my office of certain things that have to happen at certain times of the year for the agenda. So when we have agenda review, we know this needs to be put on at this time of the year. The vendors, we already approved the list of ed data vendors. We do approve state contract vendors each year, the actual individual contracts. We are now looking at some of the co-ops that we work with Hunterdon County, and we're compiling that list, so we'll present that to you each year. Student activities, and I think Donna will tell you that it's not just here, it's in all schools. This is like the least that the principal wants to worry about in their building. So we are, myself and the assistant BA are meeting with every single principal in Bursar, and we already started this process. Friday is going to be the entire day, which each individual. In the past, we met as a group. We feel this time it's better if we meet individually, because it's certain things that are happening at certain schools, it's not the same in all the schools. So we're meeting with them, but we also, we took the monthly reconciliations away, we took it in-house now, so we're actually doing a monthly rec, so then we can see, hey, there's a check written to so-and-so, why? Why is this happening? So hopefully this will be eliminated. The DRTRS, I don't know what happened there. I know that the auditors come in at this time of the year before it's submitted, and they do an actual audit on the DRTRS. They provide us a list of changes. We submitted it to the director of transportation, and for whatever reason, that was not done. So when the auditors came back for last year, so when the auditors came back to do the audit, they said, okay, let me see your final DRTRS. They noticed that the changes weren't made, so now we're going to be, we have a process put in place, because it's not the director that actually does it, the employees in the office. The director will now review it and make sure it's correct before its final submission. And the last item with the capital asset inventory, we leased three school buses July of 2016, and for whatever reason, we didn't include it in our capital inventory. So we also now have a procedure put in place that when we acquire any type of capital equipment, when you purchase a piece of equipment through this financial package, it automatically gets put into the inventory. But since this was a lease, we had to manually put that into the Fund 30 account, and we didn't do that, so therefore it never made it into our inventory.
Mr. Calavano, I know in the past you've met, as you said, you've met with building principals, so now you're going to meet with individuals, you say one?
Individual, building principals, and the person responsible for the books.
Is there any benefit to also meeting with PTAs? Because I know PTAs do a lot of fundraising and submitting receipts and things like that.
No, I don't see any benefit.
Okay. Thank you. I have nothing else. Mr. Charles?
I just have a quick, for Mr. Calavano and for the auditor. Can you explain to the public the bid threshold, what amount it is? I'm aware of.
If you're a qualified purchasing agent, which Mr. Calavano is, the bid threshold is $40,000. So any purchases in the aggregate which exceed $40,000 must go out for public bid, or if they're exempt from public bid, then the board needs to authorize why they're being approved.
Thank you. Mr. Schwartz?
Page 22.
I'm sorry, of the CAFR or the?
Page 22 of the, I think, the comprehensive annual financial.
Okay. Thank you.
So on the general fund.
Yes.
There is a deficit of $4.1 million. Can you just elaborate what that is?
You're referring to the excess deficiency of revenues over under expenditures?
Right.
That means basically that you spent more than the revenues that you brought in, which means that you utilize existing fund balance to budget your, to balance your expenditures. So you use funds on hand of 4.1 million dollars to offset your expenditures.
So does this mean that we actually, we overspent our budget by $4 million?
No, because you are, the way you balance your budget is you actually anticipate fund balance, and then you use that to pay for expenditures. So no, you did not overexpend. When you created your budget, you actually had fund balance appropriated.
Okay. So this could have been a carryover from a prior year?
Yes.
I know this is a very technical question, but ESIP, the energy savings, why was it classified as a lease versus a capital?
It's the structure of the way that the program was set up, and Mr. Calavano, I think you were more involved with setting up that program, but, yeah.
ESIP is considered the equipment lease, and that's how it's shown on our books. So this is not from us, this is how the states tell us how we need to show it.
Okay, so just the?
It's more of a legal setup.
The point being that the $11.4 million doesn't show up on our balance sheet. It's an off, what's considered an off-balance-sheet item.
Correct. It's called a long-term liability, which means it doesn't show, it's not paid for current, it's not paid from current financial resources, it's paid from future financial resources.
Right, but it's not on the balance sheet?
Not on your governmental fund balance sheet, no.
Right, so that's really the point. The point is, if someone looks at it without the notes, they wouldn't know.
They wouldn't see it.
They would not see it.
Right.
Okay, fine, all right. That's it.
Mr. Roberts?
Nothing further. Thank you.
Thank you for coming in.
All right, thank you so much. Thank you.
Okay, for the next two presentations, we're going to have our special education audit done. And if I can invite Pat and Charlie, if you can come up to the microphone, please. If I can ask the board to please come out and sit in the first row, and we're going to also have the strategic plan after that, so you can stay for both presentations.
I'm going to start off with just an overview of what the audit for special education entailed. I'm Charlie Bryant. This is Patrick Kenoy, and we are, we're hired by the district to do an audit of your special education programs. The purpose of the audit was to examine the quality, efficiency, overall effectiveness of your programs and services to students with disabilities. The areas of study that we look at is code compliance, which is major, the referral process, special education eligibility, and patterns of eligibility, curriculum and program effectiveness, parent satisfaction, and staff satisfaction. The sources of information that we look at is a comprehensive review of the special education files. Essentially, 20 percent of the special education files were randomly picked for a review. We do a paper review of the special education programs. A questionnaire was sent out to the principals and various staff members to describe the special education programs. We did, had a representative come in and observe the special education programs. And then lastly, we look at the numbers in special ed. So it's the number of students that are classified, staffing ratios, and staffing numbers. We do staff surveys. Much of our information is gathered through the staff surveys, and there's a listing of the various people that we survey. From those surveys, we obtain a review of the special education processes and implementation. We complete a parent survey as well. Also, we have a parent group night, where parents can come out and speak openly about how their child is doing in special education. We do interviews of staff. Commendations. The Board of Education and the superintendent should be commended for their foresight to examine themselves in this area. What we found was that West Orange continues its tradition, longstanding tradition, of having experienced and dedicated staff who take pride in their work. West Orange ranks well within the average range of similar districts. And lastly, you have shown and continue to show a strong commitment to providing special education to students in the least restrictive environment. Patrick.
Okay. On the special education programs, the district does offer a wide array of programs, looking for the full continuum of services throughout the different schools. They have the new Betty and Madalena Early Childhood Center for Preschool Disabled, which is a new initiative this year, I believe, and named after the former director. The district has reconfigured their language learning disability program and offered every level at the Kelly School, that happened this year as well, where they moved all programs there, which gives them the advantage of having programs that work together, rather than having programs on opposite ends of the district. It's a little more travel sometimes for parents that way, but it does offer a lot more pragmatic Specialized programs are available for autism, intellectual disabilities, and multiple disabilities for self-contained programs. There's extensive training and delivery of in-class resource instruction, the co-teaching model of a regular education teacher and a special education teacher. And there's district-wide opportunities for multi-century reading programs. As most of you probably know, reading is the most important issue for special education students. That's usually the reason that most are referred. In comparison for the district with other districts, what we do is we look at districts that are similar, meaning districts that would have a similar number of students, K-12, similar socioeconomic background, et cetera. There's multiple ways of doing that, through DFGs, peer groups, we kind of combine the two, so we get the best look at it. West Orange's classification rate was within the average range. There was a recent rise, but my understanding is that there may have been some changes in the state in terms of how they classify and look at non-public school students. NICH, one of the largest ranking systems in the country, actually, ranks West Orange 76th in New Jersey, and we look at the fact that there's over 500 districts, school districts in New Jersey, 76th is pretty good. The way they do that is they look at areas like academics, testing scores, atmosphere, bullying incidences, school lunches, pretty much all, 10 different areas, they cover almost everything within student life. The top one, which I skipped over, I'll come back to, the second highest in representative groups in cost per pupil. What we'd look at there is spending. How do you spend your money? And how is it looked at in special education? So overall, the spending is a little higher than most, and in general, it seems to be mostly with non-instructional staff. Difference between direct instruction versus support staff. Parent and staff opinions, both parent and staff, look for the best programs. Everything we found throughout the audit was that everybody wants what's best for children. That was universal. Parents and staff desire improved communication systems. That's always a difficult part within school districts because of the many layers of administration, the many different locations, getting all that information out and getting information out to parents is quite difficult. Communication is often one of the largest areas that districts look at to improve. Parents and staff desire additional professional development and increased knowledge in the practices and procedures of special education. Special ed is one of the most highly regulated areas in the entire state, so there's a lot of things happening with special ed. There's a lot of rules and requirements in special ed, and they change a lot. Over recent years, you've seen code changes. When you see code changes, you also see interpretations of code changes. And as you see interpretations, you then see legal information about how those interpretations are utilized. So things go down the line and change consistently. So that's about the biggest thing with special ed, is they're consistently changing, so you have to stay on top of that. So that's an area where it's always helpful to make sure all that information, as it comes down from the state, or as it comes down through different publications, gets to the staff, and also gets to the parents. The more people that understand why things are being done, the happier people are, and the more of a team you can create. Student record review. As Charlie said, we do about 20 percent of the records, and there's over 50 different indicators on each record that we look at. So it's a lot of different pieces within the records. The records may go back 10, 12, 14 years, because as we look at the records, we look at the most recent IEP, we look at the most recent reevaluation, which could be one, two, or three years ago. We look at the annual review, which is within a year. We look at the referral information, which could have been 12, 14 years ago. We've looked at all those pieces, so we're going back many years and many different staff members, if we look at these different pieces. But we need to look at the whole piece to make sure that you have a good look at what you need to do and what you need to watch. Many staff members require additional training and ongoing oversight to utilize this new IEP system. The new IEP system you have has every capability of doing legally compliant IEPs, however, like anything else, it can only be as good as what you put into it, and you need training to understand all those different pieces. Anytime you have a computerized system, it certainly saves time and can create more consistency, but you also have to be careful individualize, because that IEP stands for individualized educational plan. So that's always something that staff has to learn, how they can do these different pieces within the system. So about a year ago, you changed over to the new IEP, which is a very positive thing, and I think it'll make a big improvement as you keep going forward. However, you need constant training and oversight to make sure that these changes are being made and that you're still getting that individualized program. Consistent departmental procedures are necessary. Procedures are there, they're not always consistently implemented. Every case we saw that was not consistent implementation was because they were trying to do what was best for the child. So sometimes things get missed, and you've got to go back and look at those and make sure that you always document everything you do and are legally compliant with those pieces. Files should be meticulously maintained. A special education file can be anywhere from three quarters of inches thick to four files like that. So maintaining that is difficult, but you have to have an orderly procedure and you have to have a centralized system. Currently, you have the centralized system, but you need someone to monitor that everything going in it is in proper order and stays in proper order, because that's really the basis of everything we're looking at. Recommendations. Now, we talked a little about the finds we found, what should you do about it, in our opinion? Professional development is the biggest piece, and it always is. You do a lot of professional development already. However, targeted professional development and some of the pieces we found would probably be your most valued way of improving these pieces. There's a strong desire for professional development, all staff members. Throughout all the surveys, all the staff members came up, the two biggest things were professional development, and the other piece that always comes up in every single staff survey I've ever done is, we need more staff. That you just take into effect, that you're always going to say need more staff. Professional development actually makes the staff you have more efficient, and you probably don't need necessarily more staff to do the different pieces you're doing. Child study members and related service providers require staff development and oversight for the procedures, make sure that it's consistent. for the procedures, make sure they're consistently implemented. This is hard. When you look at the amount of paperwork and documentation that a child study team member needs to produce in any given year, it's an enormous amount. And the oversight has to be there to make sure that this is a normal procedure. Every time they do the same pieces, they make sure every single piece is completed. Is dotted, Ts are crossed. There's rationale for everything to do. It's hard. It's very hard because you're doing things over a period of time and you're doing four, five, six cases at a time usually for child study team members. And you need to make sure that everybody works as a team to make sure of compliance, not just the special ed administrators, but the general ed administrators as well, building and district. Everybody has to work together as a team. General and special education teachers want more instructional strategies and student assessment. As we said earlier, reading is one of the issues that always comes up because that's the biggest area for referral. One of the other larger areas for referral here was also attentional behavioral difficulties. So staff wants more training in those areas. Help us to do these pieces. Rather than say, okay, well, you know, I need somebody else to watch this child. How can I teach the child and keep their attention with us and keep their behaviors within the norm within the classroom? How can I help them learn to read? All these different pieces, many, many strategies. And you have quite a few implemented already. The thing is, you constantly need a bigger toolbox. The larger the toolbox, the more students you can reach. And student assessment is the other piece that's often forgotten in terms of, okay, how do we know if the child learned? There are many, many different ways to assess. There's no one unit test that will cover all children and see that they, what they really learned and what they know at this point and what they can bring back. So you definitely have different kinds of assessments. Differentiated assessment is an important aspect that's often overlooked. Parent information nights for better parent district procedures and options. One of the things that happens often in districts is that parents feel that things are done for no apparent reason. They don't necessarily understand the processes of special ed or the procedures that are needed to go through for every single piece. Least restrictive environment. We have so many different acronyms, LRE, IEP, SLD. There's different acronyms that parents don't really know what they are. So what happens often is parents will think that, well, they just did this arbitrarily. So parent information nights, explaining the procedure, explaining the processes so they understand those pieces as well and can be an equal partner as it's meant to be with an IEP versus feeling that they have been just given something because they asked loudly or not given something because they didn't. It's better to be a partnership and they understand those pieces. Accountability procedures. Currently, there is a procedural manual that's here, but not necessarily utilized, hasn't been utilized probably in quite a few years, has to be updated. I know that the special education department has already reached out to the state organization for a model to utilize and start changing that model over to theirs. So you'll have something new there that will be up to date and that child study team members can utilize to make sure they do the proper pieces. Another area is a parent manual so that they can understand special ed better. And I know they've already reached out as well to an organization to get a parent information manual that they can give to parents. That'll be implemented soon, I believe. Building and district level administrators need to work with the teams and accountability system. By that, I mean, it can't just be the special ed administrator looking at every single IEP. It's an impossible job. You need everybody to look at those pieces. How do you do that? Teachers have an accountability system built in already. They have observations and evaluations. During those observations, if a principal goes in to observe a special ed teacher, for example, they can ask to see that IEP and see that the IEP has been utilized in that lesson plan to make sure that all children are being reached. That's one way of doing it. Looking at all those timelines, keeping them in there. At the meetings that they have within the school district and within the school itself, having an agenda that looks at those different pieces to make sure all the timelines are being met, to make sure that all the children are being addressed. Department districts should be commended for their desire to maintain students in general ed settings. One of the more difficult things in special ed is to be able to keep students who are classified as having disabilities in a general education environment, but it's also one of the most important things. General education environments are the best places to learn. Sometimes that can't be accomplished 100 percent of the time, but the more you can stay in general ed, usually the quicker that child will progress. Need a lot of different pieces too, there's some support systems, but that can be done. That's pretty much the overview of the audit. Questions from the board? Sure, sure. Okay. Our group is called Brian, Cam, Zekino and Kozlik. We are former special ed directors and assistant superintendents of schools. Overall, we had over 100 years of experience in this area. I know, it makes it look older, right? We've done many, many things. We've done district audits in many districts. We've done training in many districts. We've done director searches. Our background is all in special ed. We've worked in special ed our entire lives. We were on state committees. We were state officials. We've worked with state, with national committees. We've pretty much been involved in special ed at all levels, from districts through USA.
Well, that looks like many years in Essex County.
Yeah, worked in multiple counties, all of us worked. Charlie and I did most of the work on this audit other than the record review. And actually Barbara, who did the record reviews also originally from Essex County as well. But we do work throughout the state and this is our business now. This is what we've done for the past eight years.
Thank you for coming out. I know you came out last week and we had many, many questions for you. And so you're back again tonight because we had all those questions and needed some answers and needed to make some revisions. And just so the public knows, I know there's a lot of chatter out there in social media. Some of the revisions were typos. For instance, Betty Madalena's name. It's, you know, I saw comments out there that said all kinds of things. The board has something to hide. It's a very voluminous document and we wanted to make sure we did our due diligence before we presented it to you. A couple of questions for you in addition to all the ones we had over the week. You mentioned that there were 50 indicators for the student record review. What are some of the examples of those indicators?
Okay, actually, I think it's 57. It goes through all aspects of the file, so it looks at things such as contact information. If everyone who actually looked at that file has signed in and dated, they'd look at that file and why. It goes through things in the IEP, so present levels academic functional performance, the different goals and objectives, all the aspects of the IEP, all the aspects of the referral process. It pretty much takes in that record from before the referral in terms of what the pre-referral strategies were, all the way up through the current time with that student in terms of what kind of programming they're getting or if they were declassified, how they exited the program.
The timelines are also watched in terms of the files. There are very stringent timelines defined by both the state and feds.
Okay. You also mentioned that in most of these studies that you do, targeted professional development is needed, more so than more staff. What is your recommendation for us? You think it's targeted professional development versus more staff as the survey is requested?
That would be a decision you would have to make. However, I would say that with targeted professional development, you should be able to do most of the things you're looking to do. And I think also you might want to reallocate staff in some ways. We always believe that it's best to have more staff doing direct instruction than support and you have quite a high support ratio, almost equal to your direct staff support ratio.
I like your idea of having a parent manual, you know, as a former special ed mom, actually, you're always a special ed mom, never former. I like the idea of the parent manual because we never, we didn't have that before when my children were students here. So that's a great idea and I think that's one that we should implement here. I have nothing further. Mr. Charles?
A few comments, questions actually. How was the turnout for the parents' night?
Good.
A large number?
Oh yeah, we had a pretty full auditorium.
I'd say 30, 35.
Maybe more than that.
More?
I'd say more like 60.
Well, that's a good number, okay. I think the two common threads that you've mentioned throughout the report are the need or the increase of professional development and the communication. That seems to be the two things that I'm pulling from the report. So what recommendations are for the targeted professional development that you have? Like, are there best practices across the United States that we need to be implementing far as hours, days and times and topics? Is something that you guys could recommend to the administration to do?
Well, the administration provides already all professional development required by state and federal in terms of hours and days, et cetera. I think it's more about what the professional development will be doing for its specific groups. Child study team would require special, creative development on things such as the new IEP program, how to utilize that and keep it individualized, timelines, eligibility criteria. Going over all those pieces again with them. Teachers would need strategies more of how to do different reading instruction, how to work with behavioral and attentional issues in their classroom. Each area would be a different piece. So what you, I don't know in terms of what your plans are for next year for professional development, if it's going to be more full district or if you're going to block them out that way, but it's something to consider in terms of what would be right for child study team would be different and what would be right for teachers would be different, right for administrators, et cetera.
And it may change from building to building.
The last thing I have is that you mentioned regular monthly meetings with the CPAC now. Is that something that's not happening right now or what did you see during the audit?
Well, CPAC's gone through a change also, that the group has changed itself in terms of the leadership and who's now involved with it. One of the things we did during the parent night was actually urge the parents to make sure they did sign up for CPAC so they would be part of that. I think that the best utilization of a CPAC committee is to listen to the people and then bring that to the administration versus having everybody targeting their own child with different pieces. You're really looking for systematic pieces. You're not looking for what happened to my child or your child. You're looking to what happens to all children or what is a systematic piece that could help all children with those pieces. And that's where the CPAC becomes your filtering system so that they can look at systematic approaches to things. So having a monthly meeting would help if they have their monthly meeting first with their personnel and then go back to the administration.
The last thing on communication, do you feel coming from the parents or from the teachers out of the survey, was it not up to, it wasn't happening enough or was it not being done through social media? Was it done through, you know, not through email, snail mail? Or was it, what was the feedback on that?
In terms of staff, the biggest area of communication was they felt they weren't as big a part of decision-making as they should be.
Okay.
Which is fairly typical as well. In terms of parents, it's often that they didn't know things early enough. I think the biggest issue that came up in terms of communication at the parent night was the move to Kelly School for those students and that, I know you've dealt with right away with those different pieces, things such as that. One of the things that we had suggested was you might want to look at a communication system for special ed parents where they can get things out to all their parents and you obviously can't give, have the CPAC group the names of all the special education parents. What you can do is have them give you the information they want to send out and have it done electronically from here.
Okay. That was more of what I was thinking, more of like an email blast or something.
Exactly. That's the most efficient way.
Targeted to them.
Yeah.
That's all I have, Madam President.
Thank you. Mrs. Slapp?
Hi. Thanks for your report. I guess if there was a theme for me throughout the comprehensive report was as it relates to aides. Clearly from your report, I believe you had indicated that on the IEPs that you reviewed, there was absolutely no exit strategy once an aide was assigned. Then when you speak about the overuse of aides in the classroom where they're not supposed to present curriculum, they're supposed to support. So I guess my issue was then again, the financial aspect of all the aides. You said basically they match the staff one for one in the special ed department and I have to imagine that would be somewhat unusual in other districts. Is that correct?
That's correct. Your ratio's quite high.
It is very high. And in your report, you had said the most, I mentioned it last time I saw you, the most profound statement where you have the least trained staff working daily with the most involved children and there clearly is a gap there. So it's just not in the best interest. And again, my son had an aide and as he got older, he would like use them like, here, carry my books. And, you know, he wasn't, you know, it was just an odd situation, I think. So I would hope that the district really focuses on those IEP strategies for the aides and the usage of the aides and the hiring of the aides because you had indicated throughout the surveys, we need more staff. Well, we have enough teachers, so what staff were they prying out for? I'm not, what's...
Part of the thing is that quite often, since there's no delineation of how to exit an aide, there's also not a great delineation in terms of role responsibilities. So teachers did not always feel that they should tell the aide what to do and aides did not feel like they should necessarily have to have the teacher tell them what to do. Well, by definition, a teacher assistant assists the teacher and works under the direct direction of that teacher. And that was one of the areas that came out that they did not understand either side.
That's a huge disconnect, don't you think?
Yes, I do.
Okay. Also, one of the recommendations to, hold on, let me get, I have too many sticky notes here. The completion of the staff surveys, you indicated everybody but aides, so you did not provide the aides with an opportunity to...
No, the teacher assistants were given the survey as well, yes.
Okay, because it just says administrators, general ed, spec ed, related service, child study and supervisors. So, okay.
I thought, didn't the teacher...
That's page eight of your report, sources of information. All right, so whatever, you say the aides did have...
Oh, absolutely. That's one of the areas. And matter of fact, the aides had specific questions that were different than everyone else, where once they said that they were a teacher assistant, they were directed to a different part of the survey.
Okay. All right, so again, it was just missing, so fine.
Oh, here, on page six PowerPoint. Completion of staff surveys.
No, I was looking at the big report.
Oh, gotcha, okay.
Yeah, page six there did not indicate the aides had an opportunity, but you're saying that they did.
Yes, they definitely did.
Which was good. Also, your report indicated that there was a lack of training for the general education teachers as far as in-class support or just understanding the threshold of criteria to become classified. So I was an advocate for 11 years and I know I would sit at a table with general education teachers, but this is going back quite a while ago. So I hope moving forward that the district does provide that PD to the general education teachers because they're the first, usually if a child is in general ed and they're not doing well, they're the first ones to say, hey. And so maybe it's not special education that they need, maybe it's other supports. So...
The larger toolbox.
Yeah, absolutely. And just from Ms. Mordecai, I know I'm going back 20 years now, but there was a parent manual, which we did, and this was in 1998, so it was quite a while ago. My executive board worked very hard on it and also at the same time, Dr. Sylvia Elias had created quite an extensive staff manual and somehow it just kind of got lost in the last 20 years. I don't know, but I do know when staff would call her with a question, the first thing was, did you read the manual? If you don't read the manual, don't call me until you read the manual, then if you don't understand, and you guys knew Sylvia.
At least somebody could get her.
I see Dr. Blair here. We all knew Sylvia. But the thing was, it was a very thorough manual and again, it just kind of, I don't know where it went, but it's clearly a need for it. Joanne has it, a big thick manual. There we go. Yeah, but I just remember, you know, those things did exist and somehow through the decades they went away, but clearly there is a need for them. And I think I have one more and then I'm going to jump to my colleagues and let them go. Misclassification of students. Particularly communication impaired, being labeled communication impaired when actually you're ESL and that is a huge problem. So I hope again, moving forward, that there is a better diagnostic and simply because a student may not necessarily speak English as the first language, they don't automatically become classified because that is insane.
And that's actually a big area throughout the state.
Oh.
We've noticed that in many different districts. We've actually recommended professional development in that area, but it has been done in a few , I know, two districts ago, we did that and that worked a lot. It's an area that most people just don't understand, so it happens a lot, even though specifically classification says cannot be due to language, language. It's still hard to come up with, so, yeah.
On a positive note though, I know the spectrum of courses or programs that we offer usually are not... usually are not in most districts. Would you concur with that?
Yeah, you were one of the leaders in terms of having more programs within the district. I think more districts are starting to look at that and bringing them back now, because you can do a better job on most programs within the district as long as you have the students to support those programs.
Right.
And you started quite early with that.
Yes, we did. In fact, we are a receiving district for some local districts because they don't have those in-class, in-district programs. So the LRE is very, very important to us here as a philosophy. And I do hope, I also serve on the School Board Association Spec Ed Committee and I hear, you know, some pretty strange stories going around the state. So I am glad that we are a leader in that, but I do hope other districts follow suit because for a lot of reasons, those private schools, they're ridiculously expensive, the oversight, but again, to have the kids back home, it makes them part of the school district. And I wasn't out of district mom for about one semester, actually. But you always feel so isolated because there is no connection. So I'm glad that we have those programs here for our students and I do hope other districts follow suit. Thank you for your report.
Thank you, Mrs. Lab. Mr. Schwartzman.
Thank you for a very comprehensive report. Some follow-ups. Can you comment regarding the files themselves? I think you mentioned that we maintain files on paper. Do, do many districts, have they transitioned to digitizing?
It's an area we've recommended before, it's a very slow process to do. Most districts, as far as I know, no district has totally electronic files yet. But I do think everyone's looking in that direction, just because of storage space alone. I mean, your BA will tell you about in terms of how you can destroy files and how, what do you have to go through before you can destroy files and how many years and everything else. So having them transferred onto electronic, something that's quite a long process, but what we recommend is the best process to use is since so much of our new material is electronic, to start saving the new pieces electronically so that you can eventually copy less and have those pieces there. But yeah, absolutely.
And your new software system accommodates that.
On, segueing into the new computerized IEP system, you commented that it has the capabilities to fully comply with the state. Can you give some examples of areas of improvement that we need as a district?
On the IEP system?
Yes.
And specifically the areas you'd really want more professional development on to make sure they're done properly would be the input section. There's boilerplate pieces that come through the IEP automatically to make sure you're compliant, but you can also individualize those pieces by the student. So that takes some getting used to, that not just click on one, two, three, four, five, six, or seven and actually change it to being specific for that student. The other areas is to make sure that you go, see what it does is, as you're going through the system, it'll make sure that you have something in all the areas that are required. It can't make sure that you have something compliant in all the areas required. So that's where, you know, professional development comes in to make sure that you know what you're doing. And I, I think I talked about this a little bit last week. An IEP tells a story. And you need that introduction and body and conclusion, and it all should flow through that. And that's where it's often lost. That story doesn't get told because you're doing it in different pieces. You might be doing two sections today and then you're working with two other students the rest of the day and you work with somebody else. And next Thursday you come back and you're going to do other two sections of that and you lose the story. If you think about when you take a book on vacation and that week you read that book, if you don't finish it, you probably don't get to those last three chapters till the next vacation. Okay? And then you're going back and you're reading other things. And that's where an IEP is. You've got to make sure that story still goes through, that explains that child on what to do.
Just one more. I must comment that you really did pick up on the fact that we as a district really are leaders in the area of special ed and having inclusive classes and the, if you had to make recommendations to us of areas that we should focus on for improvement, what areas, besides professional development?
Well, the communication system is another larger area with that. And I think that also roles, making sure everyone understands their roles and fulfills those roles, like the teachers with the teacher assistants, like how you get a teacher assistant going through those different pieces, the real roles in terms of what everybody's responsible for. And that joint responsibility of a team, it's really a teamwork piece.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Robertson.
My esteemed colleagues have covered most of my questions. First, this is really a phenomenal job that you did on this, very comprehensive. Just really want to thank you, your, your experience and insight was quite evident. Couple of things. Should we be doing our own internal auditing or QAs, QA periodically rather than waiting whether it's five years, whatever? Is there something that we should be doing?
Yeah, that can be done through oversight. Actually, one of the appendices in the report is the checklist that we utilize in the records. That can be utilized by your administrators right now in terms of checking those pieces. I would say spot checking different IEPs, I think looking for different patterns and then working with those child study team members or with those teachers, et cetera. I think all that can come out pretty, pretty quickly if you look at those pieces.
Okay. Also, given that, you know, our Marzano method for observations, it's not really a method that's made for case managers. Are there systems or approaches that you recommended in terms of how we view and, for lack of a better term, provide observations or?
Unfortunately, looking at all the different state approved evaluation systems, none of them really have a special education component that's separate, you really need to do that piece yourself working off that. Marzano has excellent materials in his, Danielson does, just some similarities there, Tomlinson, they're all there. Some districts have started to look at how they can take those same theories and apply them to child study team and special ed. And in fact, I think you started some of those pieces yourself here. I did review some of those documents looking at that. Your neighboring district Livingston has done one, working with Marzano. So you might want to talk to them, for example, in terms of if you can utilize some of their pieces or if you want to change some things yourself. It can be done, it's working. You need to have the team together so they understand those pieces like you did with your teachers.
Okay. We talked earlier about the, the need to update our manual. You know, as we're doing that, and I understand we're already reaching out to the state to get some recommendations in that regard, shouldn't even the manual itself be accompanied by some sort of orientation or training, both for new employees and periodically for existing employees?
Yeah, I mean, for sure for new employees. And one of the things you've already implemented is a mentoring program for your child study team people, which does not exist on a state level. That's something that you're doing on your own because they only mentor general education teachers. So that's all going to be on you. But you've already started those pieces, I think that manual can work with that. I think that also at the monthly child study team meetings, they can work with that manual and go through it each month to make sure everybody understands the different pieces. And as you change the manual to be your own, I think you do that with the parties. You have the child study team people work with that, you have to make committees out of it, make sure they have ownership of it as well.
Okay. You made reference to points at which our procedures are not consistently implemented and you made a quote about, had a quote about done in the, sometimes it was done in the best interest, it was felt like it was being done in the best interest of the child. Could you explain that?
Well, I guess the easiest explanation for that one would be when looking at the discrepancy formula versus response to intervention. Whichever one worked better for what they felt the child needed, they might go with versus a consistent one.
Okay. And, let's see, just, when it came to some of the, the compliance and documentation things in the audit, were there any areas that stood out, whether it's identification, referral code specs, or notations in files, or evaluation and eligibility, or anything stood out?
There are little pieces of a lot of different ones. You've got to remember that, I think we explained this last week, that there, no one, it's almost impossible to keep perfect files.
Sure.
A great filing program would probably give you about three percent error. So you're looking at the areas that are going to be up like ten percent, that'd be something that's, you know what, we really have to do something about. And there were a couple of areas like that that you'd want to do to make sure you have the right documentation. Some of it in terms of eligibility, in terms of what category, multiple disability would be one that comes to mind right away that you need to work on a little bit. And that, that would be the thing I would say the most. Timing wise, you're not too bad with the timelines. It's more just the paperwork piece, signatures, things like that.
I remember a reference in the report to some challenges in appropriately identifying or classifying multiply disabled. Do you want to comment on that?
Well, the issue of multiple disabilities is a difficult and a common misunderstanding throughout the state. And it is the one classification that is driven by student placement, not by the conditions that are relevant to the student. So a child is classified multiply disabled because he has more than one disability that requires a placement specific to those two disabilities.
Okay. That was it? Thank you very much.
Is the PowerPoint being posted on the website? Thank you.
Mrs. Lab?
Back in the day, as they say, I remember hearing that districts are required to keep records a hundred years for classified students. Is that still a requirement?
Well, the requirement actually is that once the child has graduated, you can offer their records to them. And if they take them, you can give them all as they see it. That's how they get rid of them. Otherwise, yeah, it's a long period of time before you can actually shred them. But as long as you reach out, after a certain number of years after graduation, you can post in the newspaper that these records of this year's students are going to be destroyed and come to us type of thing. The easiest way, as I said, is after graduation, offer them their files.
Okay, but I don't recall that happening when my son graduated.
It doesn't happen very often.
But I, I think it's time for like, just with that file system alone, that room down there, stuff from the sixties and seventies, eighties.
It tends to happen when you can no longer go down the steps to the basement.
Yeah, I imagine if my department came, it'd be a bit of a problem. Thank you very much.
I just want to add one thing. Mr. Ruskin? Not a question for you, I just want to say thank you to the special ed department. They've been working very hard during this whole audit process to, to accept a lot of the recommendations and just want to acknowledge that some of the things that were recommended, we had already started doing over the last few years. So thank you to all of, I know there are quite a few of you on the audience, so thank you for all your hard work.
Also, the parents who were involved, thank you. I know it was a process, we lost the first guys, we got the second guys, and there was a delay, whatever it is. So Ellen and to the CPAC members, Krista, thank you very much. I don't know if there are other parents here, I'm sorry, I don't know your names, but thank you very much for being involved in this process.
Yes, thank you to all the staff as well, the gen ed staff as well participated in the surveys and the parent nights. Thanks, everyone.
If we could just say, one of the things that is that, having the foresight to look ahead versus look backwards is a real positive thing that districts need to do more. And I give you a lot of credit for that and say, we want to find out how to do things even better versus saying, okay, no, let's just justify what we're doing.
It was an outcome from the strategic plan.
Yes, it was one of the strategic plans.
Our next show.
Sandra, just a couple of comments. First, Pat and Charlie, Barbara, please send my best to Barbara, thank you. It was a very tedious process, a very long process. I want to thank both of you. Connie Salambeino, Kristen Gogarty, and Don Ribero, thank you. I know there was a lot of work on your end as well, getting things done and, and helping move the process along so we could get to this point. And the thing I want to emphasize is the idea behind an audit is to identify what we're doing well, but also to learn how we can be better. And anytime that you expose yourself out there to something like a special ed audit is because we want to make it better. And that's really the key here, is that we want to see where we can improve and go ahead and immediately get those things in place this year. And that's what will happen, starting right after this meeting, soon as this presentation is done, literally not tonight, but Ms. Gogarty and Ms. D'Amendez and Ms. Ribero and I have been meeting and talking and looking at things so we can identify what can happen now. But there are some things that have been happening for the last couple of years, as, as Ms. Mordecai indicated, that we've been moving towards based on recommendations. And we weren't afraid to say, take those out because we're already doing them. We need to do more of it or more specific targeted PD for the individual groups, which we will do. So we will be sitting down and looking about, or looking at what we're going to do for the remainder of this year and planning obviously PD for the next two years, because it's not a one-hit wonder when it comes to professional development. What I mean is you do it one time and then you never revisit it. And I know that both of you agree that this has to be something that is sustained and ongoing. And so your findings and recommendations to us give us that leeway to go ahead and really, what's the most important, what's next, and so on, and just go right down through and then build that into what professional development looks like for our district around special education. So I really appreciate the work you did. But Ms. Mordecai, if we can now, why don't we open it up?
Mrs. Lab had one more comment.
Sure, sure.
Wanted to thank Dr. Polara. Historically, we've come to you because you are who you are and all the students are in your building. So again, thank you also very much for helping the district move along through this process because you know it from way back when, how many years, forty years you're here with us or something silly like that? But thank you very much, Dr. Flora.
Okay, just like to open it up now to the public. If anyone has any questions on this special ed audit, please come forward. Please identify yourself at the microphone, name, address. There's a timer on the clock for three minutes to allow for everyone to have a chance to ask.
Okay, seriously?
Hi, I'm Krista Senick, fifteen Westminster Terrace. My daughter is out of district and I was at that meeting, the parent meeting, and I didn't see the report, but I'm just curious what happened with that out of district placement information, because it seems like, although my daughter's getting a wonderful opportunity being out of district, I still feel that we are being ignored a little bit. And so I just kind of wanted to see if any of those reviews, those IEPs were reviewed, any of the communication. So that's, that's number one. And number two is, how many of the special needs parents completed this survey versus how many are in district? Thank you.
Let's go first one first, which would be the out of district. Yes, we absolutely looked at out of district files. We tried to make sure, although it was a random sampling, it was a random sampling through every category to make sure that we got students from every single category. So yes, we did look at out of district. One of the recommendations we made in terms of out of district students was to assure the communication occurred from the schools to the out of district students. So for example, if your child would normally be in Kelly School, that you received all the communications from Kelly School to include that child back into Kelly School and to any of the different programs, et cetera, that they had. In terms of the parent surveys, parent survey here was done through the website versus email. So there were a lot of parents that went on to the survey initially that didn't complete it, because once they realized what it was, they realized it wasn't for them. But in terms of completion, I believe we had two-hundred-and-sixty responses representing more than that in terms of students, because in terms of the students, you got to look at the multiple family students. So I believe, I have to look back at the report, the numbers exactly, but if it was two-hundred-and-sixty parents, it was probably in the area of a little over three-hundred students represented, which is about half.
And if I could just add, one of the things, based on the feedback, is when we had the last CPAC meeting at Edison, Ms. Gogarty and her staff made sure that all of the out of district parents received the letter in the mail. That's one of the things we're really trying to make sure we do is, it's hard for that if the email was changed or something is done, but we know that the snail mail still works and still gets there. So we're trying those multiple forms of communication for our out of district parents as well.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you very much.
Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate your help. Okay, if I can just ask the board to do a little exercise, go back to the first row. Mr. D'Amendez and I are just going to do a brief overview of the year-two strategic plan.
Okay. We're going to discuss, again, this is year two of the five-year strategic plan. We're not going to go activity-
We're not going to go activity by activity. We're just going to touch on a few. This obviously is on the website. Everybody can look at it. You can see it. We can go ahead and move forward. The learning goal, goal number one, you can see what it is. Go ahead, next slide. Now, on the activities, these are really the key. This is where myself, Mr. Mendez, and all the administrators and all the staff work towards meeting the objectives and the goals. So, when we look at these three major activities, the second one really has to lead, has to go before the first one, because the first one's asking for an expansion in our elementary, or in our schools, for preschool programs, but we can't do that if we don't have the room for preschool program in our elementary school. So, the capacity study on number two is what we are going to be discussing next, as we turn the calendar over to January, and discussing the findings from our architect, our demographer, et cetera, and moving forward on if we're going to make any adjustments. But, so, number two, and then number one would come if we find that relief that we're looking for in the schools. Okay, again, this is under the next goal, under objective number two, under goal one, talking a lot about connectivity, wireless environments that allow for students to work electronically, staff to work electronically, and different things. But one of the biggest ones here is looking at the science labs in the high school, number five, and the use and to ensure staff and student safety. So, we want to make sure that piece is part of it. And then, number seven is really looking at how we can include technology for our PLCs, and making a collaborative professional through social, video conferencing tools, et cetera. Objective number three for goal number one, again, looking for some solutions to some things that we've dealt with. Number one, continuing to remove voting from some of our schools. And while we would all love for that to happen, there's a set of criteria that the Essex County Board of Elections has to have, that we would provide an environment that's in that voting area. But there's a lot of reasons why we can't get them out of the schools, but we continue to work with them and try to find a location that would allow us eventually to have all voting out of the schools. Objective number four, grant writing. This is something that Mr. Robertson has discussed often. We are working. We actually have a meeting on Wednesday to get an update. I actually have a meeting on Wednesday with all the administrators. They are assigned to different grant writing opportunities through the state, and we are continuing to forge ahead to try to find additional money for different reasons. Goal number two, I'm just going to turn it over to Ms. Mendez. She's been doing a lot of work with this, and I'll allow her to talk about some of our most important work through our student achievement.
Goal number two reflects our more quantitative goals around content and state assessments and measuring student growth. Most of these are ongoing from last year. You do see shifts in ELA six through eight and ELA nine, 12 last year. The objective was to establish an assessment committee to determine if we were going to implement benchmark assessments that were created by teachers, or if we were going to adopt a benchmark assessment system. We've adopted MAP, so these goals have, these objectives have been revised to reflect the benchmarks for MAP. ELLs, we will look to evaluate the ESL program over the upcoming year. In the area of math, you will see a new goal, math three through geometry, we are establishing. We have established a committee this year to evaluate our district's math program, three through geometry. We will begin with a curriculum audit and look to implement recommendations in September of 2019. With math, six through eight, again, you see the new benchmark assessments reflected in the revised objective, and we continue with our algebra goal.
Before we move off math, we're going to have a presentation next board meeting from our high school group, and we're going to be talking about SAT classes, and we've got some other ideas we're going to try to implement for this summer, July 1 of 2018, for enhancement of math skills. Maybe a student is right on the cusp of being in a higher level course, and they could go to a class over the summertime that might help them. They could take the test, and if they do well, they could go ahead and get into that class. So, we're looking at all of those areas, just to make sure that we're providing the best opportunity for students to get advanced as much as they can.
In this area, we continue with our school climate, science, and social studies goals. Those are similar to last year. They are ongoing. Physical education, technology and engineering stay the same. Visual and performing arts, we met our rhythm goals, and we've shifted over to sight reading. Mr. Rutske discussed our data teams at the high school, and there are large committees represented throughout the high school that are really focusing on park, the graduation rate, PSAT. The SAT objective was revised because the assessment changed, and the cutoff scores looked differently, and therefore, this was revised to say that students would need to meet the ELA and/or math benchmarks at a specific percentage.
Before we move off the PSAT, one of the things that we do, you may not be aware of, is every student has the PSAT paid for in the grade level, and what we're looking to do is, there's a new PSAT as of last year, that's for eighth-grade students and ninth-grade students. Not so much about the mastery, but also about the ability to stay focused during the testing time. And when we work on those skills at a lower grade, like eighth grade or ninth grade, there is proven success as they move into the 10th and 11th grade. So, there's a lot of things that we are evaluating now for September of next year. This is another one, and again, this will be coming in the next month or so to the board to discuss, and then to go back and determine, is this something we can put into place?
In the area of instructional rounds, we will continue with Year Two, looking at problems of practice in the area of the Reader's Workshop, identifying specific areas to work with our teachers in order to develop the structures, and then a communication plan in order to communicate how we're moving forward and how we're progressing toward meeting those objectives. With regard to the district assessment plan, again, the committee that was formed last year made recommendations with regard to implementing a benchmark system. So, now, our role this year, Year Two, is to really look at those data. How are the students performing, establishing growth goals, monitoring their progress, and implementing intervention strategies along the learning continuum. These next objectives and activities really focus on reading as a priority. They are about reading, professional development, matching students to the appropriate texts, monitoring teachers' assessments, again, the clear structures for their workshop model, and all of the items that we implemented last year, continuing with Year Two. For example, with Fontis and Pennell, we administered it three times last year. We're looking at that data, looking at how students are performing, and using those reading levels to help us address the student needs and instruction. For objective number five, when we're thinking about STEAM here, large, large initiative is number two. This year, we've adopted our new elementary science program, and therefore, we are providing teachers with professional development while completing the curriculum. We see CTE and STEM programs for nine, 12 as a Year Two objective, continuing with our partnerships, and really looking at increasing our electives for STEAM. For objective six, last year, you received a presentation from Cheryl Butler, our Director of Personnel, of Guidance, Student Personnel Services, and so then, her and her team will continue with Year Two for examining the counseling program and seeing how we can continue to strengthen our focus on students. And for objective seven, goal two, we have redesigned and implemented and monitored the GNT program plan. Last year, we presented the program plan for GNT revisions. This year, we will be implementing that beginning in January, and we have two upcoming parent forums. This Wednesday, from 7:00 to 8:00 PM at Redwood, we will have our first parent forum to begin to discuss the new GNT program, the criteria, and we will have a second forum on the 11th at St. Cloud from 7:00 to 8:00 PM. Again, it is the same forum, so parents can choose which school would be most convenient to attend, but we do invite all of our parents to attend.
Okay, goal three is about wellness, health and wellness, and encourage the wellness across the district. A lot of things that took place last year, getting kids out of the seat, five-minute breaks, movements in the hallways, classrooms, et cetera, doing things here at the high school during lunchtime, a lot of different things that we're continuing to work towards. But the physical activity, the physical movement, we know is very important for students to be focused or refocused, so we will continue. Workout Wednesdays, Mr. Alvine, doing some really, really fine work with all the physical education, health staff, looking at bringing on an intramural program. We have a lot of kids that participate in sports, but we also have a lot of students who could enjoy intramurals and that do not belong to a athletic team. So, there's a lot of different things that we're going to be evaluating with Mr. Alvine and Mr. Bly, our Athletic Director. Goal number four, parent, school, and community engagement, really looking for the multilingual parent and guardians to create the PR committee, important piece for us. It's also important that we evaluate, is transportation something that will help us to get more parents out to events that we have identified as important events, and we're working towards providing busing at all the schools to do that. One example might be for our elementary schools and our Gifted and Talented Program, that we would have a bus available for the parents to take them to Redwood on that evening, or St. Cloud on the next week's evening, just to see if that might be able to assist some of our parents, that maybe transportation is an issue. Another one would be childcare, where we could have some of our volunteers help with kids watching a movie, playing some athletics in the gym while the parents are learning something that is important in the district. Objective number two, we talked about the school counseling, developing an outreach and a recruitment program. Very important that we try to tap into our community members in their expertise, looking at establishing a career of the month program, where we would have individuals within the community or outside the community come in and work with our students about a career for that individual month, obviously utilizing technology to help us in this area as well. Objective number three, continue to facilitate question and answer sessions around the key district initiatives, accomplishments, and events to see what parents believe are important. Getting accurate information is one of the most important pieces that we need, so as we move forward, we can make sure we focus our time and energy on what the parents really need. Okay, at that point, kind of is an overview of our Year Two activities, along with our goals and objectives. So, if I can invite the board to come back up, we can ask Ms. Mendez to just stay here at the microphone, and then again, we'll open it up to the public after the board is done.
Okay. Now, all I can say is, wow, what a lot of work. Thank you. Thank you so much. I'm going to let my colleagues start. I have a whole long list, so I'll let my colleagues go ahead of me. Mr. Charles?
Two things, two questions. On goal one, we talk about provide smart televisions for the elementary schools. Is that something, you're looking at each individual classroom, auditorium? What's the proposal for that?
We are looking at strategic locations for those. It actually is less expensive now to utilize that kind of technology than it is the old, what do we have, what are they hanging now?
The smart boards.
The smart board, yes. So, it's actually less expensive, and we can get more out of that way of going as opposed to what we have been doing. So, and again, you know, you have to remember that we are basically a one-to-one district now. Our K1 and 2 are utilizing carts in the elementary level, but beyond that, we're at a one-to-one level. And so, that, the smart TVs allow us to do different things with the Chromebook and eventually with the handhelds, et cetera.
Next thing I have is, on the career month program, is that something that you're looking to do district-wide, all elementary schools, or just the high school for that month?
Definitely secondary, definitely sixth to eighth, and, you know, every year, the elementary schools have a career day, and so that would be something that we would try to incorporate. And being that it's the first year, we know that it's going to be successful in the secondary. We're going to see what it would look like at the elementary level.
And the last thing I have is, a lot of the elementary schools talk about going outside for recess, but some schools don't. The temperature is always an issue. Can you just explain a little bit real quick about what your thoughts are, what the laws require?
Sure. Well, growing up in the snow belt in Ohio, we didn't close school, and so it was always interesting. When I came to New Jersey, and, you know, it flashed on the TV, you know, snow warning and all this, and it was snow three inches, and, you know, I always found it very interesting. But I've told the principals that unless it's dangerous, whether it be that cold, or ice on the blacktop, or wherever the kids are playing, that they should be out if they are properly clothed, meaning gloves, hats, jackets, et cetera. Now, the other alternative to that is that some kids just don't like going out in the cold, and some parents don't like their kids going out in the cold. So, what I've spoken to the principals about is trying to have a room where maybe kids could go into, usually the bigger rooms are taken for lunch, so they can't have like any kind of athletics going on, or fun sports going on. So, they might have to do something different in that room, and I'm not one to say to the principal, this is what you must do. That's why they're in their position. But for the most part, giving children the opportunity, when we get to that weather, which we're not even close to yet, thank goodness, is what we want kids to go out, we want them to run around, we want them to play, we want them to get rid of that energy, but they have to be properly clothed to do that. And if they're not, we usually just call and say, your son or daughter can't go out because they don't have a hat, they don't have gloves, it's really cold out. If we have something, but we don't like to get into that where you take these because they're not yours. So, we'll make a phone call and say, you know, this is what you need, and your son or daughter can go out. If a parent calls and says, I want my child to be out, our first priority is to get him out, but we also want to make sure that it goes back to the conditions where things are safe, and that they are properly clothed for going out into cold weather. This whole notion about 32, it has to be above 32 degrees, that's nonsense. That's that whole unwritten rule. That is not true. The idea is, if it's safe and they're prepared for it, by all means, they can get out there and run around a little bit.
And that goes not only for cold weather, but also in the warmer months when we're...
No question. No question.
That's all I have, Mr. President. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Robertson?
Lots more work to do, I see. Okay. My first question and concern comes with goal two, objective one, and it's looking at the PSAT. You have by 2021, 10th and 11th grade participation, the PSAT will increase to 90%. Granted, there are going to be two types of PSATs, but the truth is that for decades, in public schools, private schools, schools across the country, that kids are taking the PSAT in ninth grade and retaking it in 10th. Pushing everything up to 10th and 11th is not only too late in the process, but top-performing public schools, top-performing private schools, yeshiva schools have vertical articulation, such that they're starting prep for PSAT in no later than eighth grade. So, by the time they're moving into ninth grade, they have a chance to perform well. Now, this is... Now, this is important for a couple of reasons. One, it puts them on a stronger and faster growth curve when it comes to doing well on the SATs at a much earlier age, and it can still align with the curricula that they're learning in eighth and ninth grade. Number two, it actually, parents, a lot of parents and kids don't realize, if they don't do well on the PSAT, it cheats them out of the opportunity to be National Merit Scholars. They can do badly on the PSAT, do well on the SAT, and they end up a National Merit Scholar semi-finalist. If you do well on the PSAT and then do well on the SAT, there's money in it. There's scholarships available. And that's a pretty large pool of scholarships that are available purely based upon their performance and starting that early. So that's a huge, huge concern that we're starting this so late and we're not really demonstrating here that kind of vertical articulation that starts to prep in eighth grade and that pushes towards doing well on the PSAT starting in ninth grade and then first quarter 10th.
We will be bringing a proposal to the board with regard to SAT and PSAT for eighth grade. Right now, we can't make it a goal because we don't have baseline data. However, once we administer the PSAT in eighth grade, which is an upcoming proposal, then we can set that as baseline data and then make an objective to meet that goal.
Understood.
Mr. Robertson, maybe you missed, that's what I said when I was at the podium, that that's something I'm going to bring to you in the next month or two about pushing down the PSAT to eighth and ninth grade students.
Right. What I was thinking though, from a planning standpoint, when presenting the strategic plan update, it should probably be noted in there as, hey, this is the next step and this is how we're going to approach it. The other thing is, we have goals based upon percentage participation. And we should really be looking at how we've been scoring in the PSAT the past five years, how we've been scoring in the SAT the past five years, how we've been scoring the ACT, which isn't even mentioned here, the past five years. And a lot of kids are moving towards the ACT in addition to the fact that it's often recommended by our own guidance department as well appropriately, that kids try to take both SAT and ACT so they can then customize when they're doing their applications. If somebody does well on one versus the other, that's the one they go with, even though the SAT has moved closer in format and content to the ACT. So, you know, it'd be great to see ultimately not just to actually look at what is the data that we already have say, and then what kind of percentage increase are we looking at from a PSAT and SAT standpoint, because we have tons of data.
Mr. Mendez, didn't you send that home a few weeks ago?
But it's not here in front of the public. We got some of this, but we don't have anything saying, okay. We got three years, actually, and we didn't get PSAT at all. And the public hasn't seen that. But, so, you know, getting the data that's over like a five-year period and then being able to say, okay, this is how we've been trending. What percentage increase are we looking for? Whether it starts out modest with three percent or four percent or five percent, what is that goal? And we did not get PSAT. So it'd be great to get that data past five years for all these exams and then look at, as you did here with the increased five percent in math, four percent in reading on the SAT, be able to set those types of goals across the board.
Yeah. One of the things that, if you remember, we talked about, we were planning on having that presentation, which would include what you're requesting tonight. But two of the key individuals on that committee were dealing with some medical things tonight and they couldn't, we could not do it. So that's why we had to push it to the 18th.
Okay, understood. I just wasn't clear from this what that presentation was going to entail.
Right.
Will we be seeing past five years' data and these types of projections and plans?
Yes. And then the other piece too, that, you know, we want to be clear on is we can't change the PSAT goal right now because we don't know exactly. We have a framework of what we want to do, and when we finalize that, then we'll readjust this piece of it. And understand that this is a working document and we're trying to improve student achievement and every program within the district. So if it's going to enhance what we're trying to do, we'll revise that piece for PSAT, but we just need to make sure we flush it out a little bit more.
Okay, great. Going to goal two, objective four. We're in what, year three of re-instituting Fontis and Pennell and making sure that everybody's trained on it and that sort of thing. When can we see the actual data? After year one, you shared with us some data, and I know that you're pulling data three times a year. You do beginning, middle, and end.
This is year two. This is year two.
So we should be seeing data on how we're performing in Fontis and Pennell and what type of impact it's making on our students?
We have all of that data. We've reviewed it as teams. We've reviewed it with our administrators. And in our reading goal, which is the first goal under goal two, we are looking for, if you give me one moment. Based on that data by June 2018, that's at the end of this year because last year we set our baseline, sixty to seventy percent of the students will meet or exceed the Fontis and Pennell. So we did examine that data last year. We set the baseline. And now we've determined that the sixty to seventy percent is our aim.
Okay. Looking at... Oh, as we got to goal two, objective six, and we're looking at the guidance program. When will we see the guidance survey results?
They administered them, I believe it was about two or three weeks ago. They're compiling that, and as soon as we have that available, you can see that.
Okay. Two, as I'm looking through some of the objectives and action steps, there's some things that are even more basic here that I see missing. And part of this came out of a recent PTA meeting right here in this room. And that is it was discovered, once we started talking about some of the programs and departments, like the engineering department, like the health sciences program in partnership with Rutgers, like our computer science track, that there were parents with 10th graders, even 11th graders in some cases, who said, wait a minute, maybe some of this stuff is available in Naviance, and it's certainly in the book we're given. But why didn't anybody, when our kids are coming in as ninth graders, talk with us about all the programs that are available and the different tracks to go on? If you're not already in IMS or IH or the civics, you know? And so one of the things that came out of that was something basic missing from a guidance standpoint in terms of, hey, this is the array of programs and career tracks that we have available at the high school. Regardless of whether or not you entered through one of the small learning communities, these are things you could take advantage of. And that's what I see missing here. That was really kind of fundamental.
Yeah, I know that we just discussed this about a month ago. And when they have the eighth grade parent meeting for going into ninth grade, they have it at both Roosevelt and Liberty. That's one of the really important pieces they talk about. But that's something we always can continue to try and communicate for those parents who aren't able to attend those, either one of those meetings.
Okay. Going to goal three, objective one. You know, these are nice and very general, but one of the things I've raised here before, and it's actually, it's national news on an almost daily basis now. Where is our education to kids six through twelve built into the health, our health education on anxiety and depression, which is epidemic? And often, and even that's epidemic based upon the stats that are actually available and believed to be underreported and underdiagnosed. And something that kids anecdotally will talk about dealing with, that's absent from our health program. We will talk about suicide and suicide prevention, suicidal ideation, things like that. But there's a whole range of experiences in anxiety and depression and challenges prior to getting to that, that our kids are often experiencing. Is there any, where is that in our health education program?
It is addressed in our health education program. If you'd like more information on where and what units or how that's addressed, we can provide that for you.
Okay, because I haven't actually, with my kids going through the programs, haven't really seen that. I would like to see that. Number two, something I know is not being addressed, that is huge national news, is the addiction code and the behavior associated with social media addiction and the fact that it's also increasing anxiety and depression and the fact that there's actually real data now on how it affects the brain and stimulating pleasure centers and how it gets kids into this loop of behavior and how it actually impacts their lifestyles on a daily basis. Are we teaching anything about that, exploring anything about that?
I can look into that.
That'd be great. Next, under goal three, objective two. Had we, you may have mentioned it in here and I missed it. Have we done anything, I know a couple of the sports programs did, but have we done anything overall in conjunction with the president's physical fitness program?
Now, we use something very similar to the presidential, and Mr. Alvine would be able to provide that. But this, all the students compete in something very similar.
Okay. Next, a couple of things that I've heard from parents quite a bit for both elementary school and middle school. And this relates for general ed, for non-honors, non-GNT, is that we're struggling in terms of delivering enrichment and differentiated instruction. And that's often not, it's, you know, for parents who may or may not know, you know, what that is. For kids who may not be in honors or even before we have an honors track, we're supposed to be able to instruct them at the level that where their kid is able to, where the child is able to perform and to challenge children at all levels. And that enrichment has been inconsistent or in some cases weak and differentiation in instruction has not been consistently delivered. How does that factor into our plan?
I think we would have to define differentiation and really analyze whether we are or are not, as you are supposing. When we think about our elementary program, if we think about ELA, for example, we have a very rich differentiated ELA program. When we're thinking about guided reading, when we're looking at making sure that our children are reading it, they're just write books, our entire reading program is differentiated. When we're thinking about our math program and we're looking at really working in small groups with students and devising or setting up lesson plans to address their individual needs and embedding those strategies and interventions, then that's a form of differentiation. When we're thinking about extending learning opportunities, then you would embed the enrichment. I think we're going to see continued improvement in that area, of course. Specifically, when we're looking at our curriculum, we're now embedding those strategies directly into the curriculum and based on our data. So I think that's going to be an enhancement in the classroom. When we're thinking about our benchmark assessment data, that we're now really integrating new levels and new forms of benchmark assessment data. We're coupling that with learning continuums. So it's no longer my child, yeah. Well, with MAP, with FNP, right, we're looking at the continuums that go along with that. I think we're all guilty of the traditional, here's an assessment and here are the numbers. This is the percentage that was correct or the percentage. But now we're saying, okay, my student is really struggling with multiplication or my student is really struggling with being able to identify the sequence in a story. And so the data is saying this, and here's the learning maps. This is where my child is. This is what he can or cannot do. And this is the next step. This is where you want to move him within the next six weeks. Assess again and then move again. So I think we are definitely, in many ways, differentiating well for our students.
Now that you have walked through that, I would agree with you, particularly in English. Just, you know, anecdotally and personally, I haven't seen it as much in math and science or not necessarily in social studies, although the social studies and English are often very much in sync in many ways.
And the DBQs in social studies.
And the DBQs in social studies. The other area, other thing that would be enrichment, enrichment curriculum that's not only challenging, but motivating, stimulating. Whether it's, just to give a quick example, we would see in GNT the bridge building or different engineering exercises. Wasn't seeing that for general ed in elementary school, science, for instance. And I know we're just getting into our next-generation science standards and curricula, but that was definitely missing.
Well, I think we're going to be very excited together then. In science, we see the new program that's being implemented with a whole host of differentiation and not just for the general ed, but it also gives very specific strategies for our ELLs and for our students with disabilities. When we're thinking about, again, our performance-based assessments and technology and engineering at the elementary, middle, and high school level, we're seeing STEM pushed in through all of our PBAs. So maybe under Mr. Rutske's direction, we could provide you some of those strategies and some of those examples.
Okay. And last but not least, of course, one of my favorite areas. While it's great to see that we're now forming committees for the grant writing, it's goal one, objective four. This doesn't really outline what the board had actually approved and we agreed to. New Jersey School Boards internally has grant research, and it references that here, where they research, we had first in 2015, then again in the budget in 2016 to 2017, allocated $50,000. Seven thousand of that was for unlimited grant research, where we present them with a program and they in turn research the grants. Part two of that was we were supposed to take that other forty-three grand and engage their strategic partner, the company called the Grant Office, to actually write grants and not just have, because one of the findings that led us to this is that as engaged as our supervisors and directors and all that wannabe, they simply don't have enough time. It's never productive in terms of generating the types of dollars that are out there. They could certainly, they need to certainly be involved in identifying the programs and stewarding the program grants. But the Grant Office, we were supposed to hire for a number of reasons. One, they do it on a per grant basis. So like an $83,000 grant for Jersey City cost four grand to write and for them to follow up and to sell in. Number two, they have existing relationships with private foundations, corporate foundations, and corporations. And they cannot just direct us as to who to contact, but they would be the ones actually writing the grant and then leveraging their existing relationships so we could bring in more money. And that's not really in here at all. It wasn't just about our folks writing it. It was about saying, we were to invest this money and engage in the Grant Office to go after, I believe, as Mr. Rutske referred to, the bigger grants. And then our folks would go after some of the smaller ones. You know, one grant for a high school program I did with Enroads was $250,000. So, I mean, we're missing opportunities. And just talking with the Grant Office folks, they were saying, hey, there are opportunities. We're not going after now. It's like, what happened to you guys? You're supposed to be writing stuff with us. There's stuff we could be going after for your engineering department with Lockheed Martin. There's stuff we could be going after that's available right here in Essex County and money's available as well as in the state and nationally, and we're not doing it. I mean, this, we're leaving money on the table.
So in August, we met as a team, our leadership team. Mr. Rutske divided all of the administrators into groups. We sat, we looked at our data, we looked at possible grants, different lists. And there is now a team for researching along with NJSBA which grants we would look into, which grants we could write in-house, and which grants we would ask them to write. And so then I believe there are about five or six teams. And under the leadership of one of our supervisors, those teams are meeting to create not only the proposals for the grants that we are eligible for, but to decide which ones are indeed too much work. You're very correct. It's a lot for the supervisors to sit and write grants. But they are identifying which ones we're eligible for so that we can submit them to the grant writing department. And that was the procedure they gave us. In addition, we are charting it, as you specified in a previous meeting, to say, okay, so here's the grant, here's the amount. If we apply for it, here's the eligibility, and if so, how much might we receive? And if it's sustainable or not, and if it's not sustainable, how many years out? So this grant might give us this income or this support for this number of years. And then after which, the board would need to consider sustaining the initiative. So we are in process. It is in the document. It just doesn't spell it out that we are looking at both options, what we are writing and what they're writing. We've also extended that to include before and after-school programs.
Good. That's huge.
And STEM as a focus, and there was another focus, I don't remember.
There was preschool at one point and... There was preschool at one point and steam.
It's preschool, STEM, after-school.
We have four committees that are made up for before and after-school programs. Two at the elementary, one at middle, and one in high school. I said earlier when I was presenting that I literally had a meeting on Friday and today with Ms. Granata, and we have a meeting with each individual group on Wednesday to do an update, to see what's been submitted, and to talk about those larger grants we've talked about, having Elizabeth help us with those.
And I'm so glad that you're engaging Ms. Granata in the process, since while she hasn't done the private grants, some of that knowledge and experience that she has with the federal and state grants can certainly be helpful from especially meeting requirements on certain things. The only other thing, and it's good to hear this is going along, the only other thing I would add to that grid is you look at also, based on the closing rate, like the Grant Office spouted a 50% closing rate. So if you want to bring in a half a million next year, they would need to write for a million dollars worth of grants to bring in that half million. And that's part of how you figure out how you actually ought to get to that goal. Looking at closing rates internally, which of course would be much lower probably, and their closing rate as a company. All right, thank you very much.
Mr. Schwartz.
I think the strategic plan is very comprehensive, that the continued use and implementation of technology. You know, we implemented the Chromebooks, which is really, really a big step forward for everyone. That the other piece that I'm very happy with is the continued emphasis of student achievement, that the baseline that we're monitoring, that we're going to communicate feedback, and that we have objective results. One suggestion I do have in regard to transportation, potentially, we could ask the town to utilize the jitneys that the town has. The town has, I think, five or six buses primarily used for senior citizens and for commutations. So it would most probably be available after hours. So it may be, it may be another way to get small groups of people around. That's it.
Hi. Just one question regarding Goal Two, as it relates to the graduation rates. I see, you know, what the goal is, but about a year ago, I had presented to you in the superintendent an analysis of local districts, and we're asking for about 15 credits more than our neighbors, and it certainly would impact incoming students who transfer in. What's the status of that review?
They're examining that closely. We met about right before Thanksgiving to really go over the points. The principal has a committee. Ms. Rutske charged them with taking a look at the credits that we require, the credits that you outlined in that report. How much, how many credits do we want our students to graduate with? Why does it exist this way? How might that hurt if it does? If we, you know, cut down on the credits, would that hurt students in any way? And if not, how can we reconsider the allotment and advanced coursework if we're going to require those types of credits? So they're taking a look at that. And I think that will be a part of that presentation that was mentioned today, when they're talking about park and graduation rate and all of that. That is a part of their analysis.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you for, it's very detailed and comprehensive work. For Goal One, Objective, Objective One, Item Three, there's a reference here to related services and other things for preschool. I know I shared with Mr. Rutske, I had a question from a parent as it relates to preschool trips for the new Betty Madalena School. Parents there wanted to know exactly what was available to them. So if you could just follow up on that for me. For the West Orange Science Labs for Safety and Security, I know, Mr. Rutske, I forwarded you contact information that I received from New Jersey School Boards Workshop this year. If you could just take a look at that and see if that's acceptable to present to the board, or if we should, the Science Labs. For the Science Labs to maximize the use and to ensure lab safety. I forwarded that, I believe, to you, Mr. Calavano, unless we have somebody else that we've used in the past. If not, we can go out and RFP and find something. A couple, couple things, I guess, for my town council liaison, Mr. Charles and Mr. Schwartzbaum. Objective Two, number two, where it says adding more access points for wireless connection for students. I know many parents have reached out to me and said that parents don't have access to the internet at home. And I have talked to other districts like Bloomfield, where they came up with different creative methods to increase access points, such as having, say, West Orange Township let parents know public access points throughout the town that kids can plug into. Or if not, I know another district said that they actually had mobile access points, and they gave parents the information so that kids could log in, do their homework, because it's very expensive. While most kids have a phone and they can access on their phone, if they bring home the Chromebooks, they don't have access. They don't have internet connectivity, whether by Comcast or wherever, so they should need that. So that would be something to add to your agenda the next time you have a liaison meeting with the town. Sure.
I said it on the zoning board, and recently, we had an application by AT&amp;T to put up additional towers. And one of the things we had requested from AT&amp;T was to look into providing mobile access to the, in that, in the area, encouraging for that specific reason. And they said they would look into it, and we're trying to figure out a way that they could provide it to people who are in need, so.
Great, thank you. And I guess also to add to your agenda was the polling sites, and, yeah. You're on top of that, I know. And the other thing is, I know the Pedestrian Safety Committee, and I think I see Mr. Alper in the back somewhere, I know he attends some of those meetings. They have been talking about improving sidewalk accessibility throughout the town. And I don't know if that's something you've already discussed with the town. But once, once we complete more of our sidewalks, I know this is also something Roz and others have been pushing, we can actually lower our transportation costs if kids actually had a safe sidewalk to access schools.
We have worked with the town to try and identify where sidewalks could be put in. They've identified a couple places, they're long shots. It's difficult, it's very difficult. There's a lot of reasons that go into why you can't. And I'm not an expert anyway, but there are individuals in the town that are. But there's not a lot of opportunity right now.
But even on Main Street, and Main Street is a relatively flat road, there are areas of Main Street that there are no sidewalks. Yeah. Okay, still on Goal One, Objective Three, number six. You have enhanced social studies and physical education. Few parents have reached out to me, and I know we have the Amistad integrated into the curriculum, but parents are having a hard time identifying exactly what the Amistad means. So if you could just clarify for that. I know, I know the social studies supervisor responded to a few parents.
Yes, you know, we can, we can just put something on the website. This is more about safety and community, but to answer your question as well, we can get something up that Mr. Shauske did already.
Yeah, he created a crosswalk between our curriculum and the Amistad curriculum, and it's very laid out, so we could definitely publish that right away.
Okay, great. For Goal Two, in the area of, I guess, ASAP, B-SAP, I am very glad to see that B-SAP for ASAP for bands is here again. Looking forward to that being fully implemented. Under Goal Two, Item Eight, exploring the RTI model as a form of supplemental instruction in middle schools. I would like an update on the RTI program that we installed a few years ago for K-5. I don't think I've seen an update recently. Just want to make sure, you know, how is it working? Are we continuing that? Did we change it? Should we change it?
If you remember, we had that conversation, and we're trying to be respectful to the time that, you know, we have presentations, so that's definitely on.
On the list.
But we're looking for, where is the appropriate place? We don't have a lot of other things like tonight, where we have three presentations.
Okay, I understand, just putting it back on your radar. Thank you for the career fair for middle school. I know we had talked about that, that at the elementary schools, it's always great to have parents come in and highlight their various careers, but once you get to middle and high school, there's nothing. So it's kind of hard to show students what an example is of their course choice, and how that, how that can become a career path. In particular, I know a student, a recent graduate of the high school who's a dentist, reached out. I forward you his information. You're going to talk with Hayden about it to see if you can get him in, because he, he says that there's, there are not a lot of students going into dentistry, and he's very upset that when he's in his classes, he looks around, his class is fairly empty. So he wants to come in, come out and speak to West Orange High School students and middle school students about becoming a dentist. So I'm glad to see that career program. I'm glad to see the Wellness Committee is back on. I see Ms. Minton in the audience. I know she was a part of the Health and Wellness Committee that Mrs. Lab was a board liaison to. So I'm glad to see that's back again. Few parents have reached out and said, and I believe Mr. Rutske, Mr. Robertson just spoke about it. They wanted to make sure that their kids are getting more opportunity for activity. And in particular, one parent I met with wanted to extend recess by 10 minutes. So if you could just explain if you're going to extend recess in any of these initiatives? Or, because the movement that you've described is, I guess it's like, based on an individual teacher or individual building, individual principal? Is there anything that's going to be across the board to expand recess and activity?
No. Sorry.
So it's building-based?
No, recess is the same across the school. There's the same amount of lunch slash recess time on all seven schools. If a child takes a little longer to eat, they're not, you know, being rushed out, then we want to make sure they finish their lunch, and then they'll go out and have whatever playtime is left. So, you know, the, we know that that's why Mr. Alvin has done a phenomenal job working with, you know, all of the staff on movement, because there's such a need for so many different things. So, you know, the answer at this point is, no, there will not be an increase.
Not across the district, okay, okay.
Across the district, we did add the 10 minutes for fitness, though, the program. So the students are every day 10 minutes for fitness.
Okay, okay. And the last point I have is, Sustainable Jersey for Schools has a lot of grants available for health and nutrition, and also for gardens. So if you could just check into that as well, we may be leaving money on the table for health and fitness and gardens. And that's it for me. Thank you to you, the administration, Mr. Rutske, for all your hard work.
Bring in a $25,000 grant?
Yes, that's a fuel up the NFL brand.
Yes, he did, not 25, but close to it. Yeah, he and Josh from the Food Service have worked together on that, yes.
Yes, the NFL fuel up 60, I think it was.
Okay, I'm just going to move on quickly to the HIV report, and then the athletic extracurricular update.
Mr. Rutske, maybe we should take questions, I think we should take questions from the public, right? Does anyone have any questions on the strategic plan? If you'd like to come forward? Yeah, there you go.
Hi. Rachel Gordon, 8 Meeker Street. Okay, so there is recess in elementary school. There is not recess in middle school. And there's really no research that says that all of a sudden at age 11 and 12, you stop needing a break where you're sort of with your friends. The GNT notification that there's going to be meetings, was that December? When, when did that go out? Because I, as a parent, did not receive any notification. So I'm just sort of, how are parents supposed to come if there's no notification? Let's see, what else? Oh, the math committee, is that an internal committee? Or is there going to be any outside community involvement? Chromebooks, I totally agree with Ms. Mordecai and Mr. Schwartzbaum about setting up towers or something, because from four to seven, around when all kids are doing their homework on Chromebooks, it's very slow. And those kids who have access to other computers, sometimes will go to that. But if you don't have access and you only have a Chromebook, it's not really that fair for those kids. So that would be great if we can work on that. Let's see. There's a lot of emphasis on testing, which, not my favorite subject. I know that the maps were, you know, while I think it's good that they're actually an outside company that we're using this map, and that it can go, you know, further than the grade and everything. I remember when we, they, you touted it, there was going to be a huge amount of information that parents were going to get. I got my report, wasn't very exciting, not a lot of, which I knew. I knew there was not going to be a lot of specific information on there. But hopefully, you're somehow using at least the benchmark type to do some things. And I think, I think that is it. Other than to say that differentiation can also be done within a classroom, because I have to, I do it every day. And there can be some creativity to it. And I feel like saying just write books, especially, you know, especially when I sort of feel like it should also go by interest, and not necessarily always just write books. So there has to be some creativity to it, and let teachers kind of maybe share ideas of what works and how to differentiate so that it's, that I, while I appreciate that we are trying to do some of that, I think we can do more. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Mr. Rutske?
Sure. Ms. Mendez, you want to come back up for a minute? Yeah, that's correct, there is no recess in middle school. The GNT notification went out to all elementary parents. It is also right on the website, the landing page. If you, if you look there, it's there, so it's accessible. Went out in Spanish and English version to our K-5 parents. Chromebooks, towers, emphasis on testing, map. Why don't you address the information, I guess, about MAP and the DI, if you don't mind?
The MAP data is being used by our teachers. We are looking at the learning continuum. We've had professional development extensive to really analyze that data and to begin to dig in to see what the teachers are going to embed into their small group instruction. Remember, MAP is a teacher tool. It's designed for the teacher to differentiate in the classroom. The parent report that went out is a first one. And then we'll look to see how we will have maybe some workshops or parent forums where we're sitting down, looking at that data and say, this is how we're using it in our classrooms. With differentiated instruction, I couldn't agree more. There's toys, there's many different ways in which we're embedding differentiation into the classroom.
Thank you, Mr. Rutske. Any comments on the HIV report? I have none.
Just a couple of extracurricular athletic updates here. This past weekend, the public schools participated in the Township Holiday Open House. Breakfast with Santa was hosted at Washington Elementary School Saturday. Roosevelt Middle School provided their course, and West Orange High School, I don't know if you remember Vincent Means, well-known for his distinguished voice, broadcasting all good things in town. He served as the master ceremonies. You saw that Marley Davis, the 30 for 30, 30 under 30, excuse me, 30 for 30 is ESPN, sorry. 30 under 30, congratulations to Marley and her family. The winter concert season is in very full swing. Please look at the website for the individual schools' times and dates that are coming up. Winter sports. Winter sports have begun. Ice hockey has already opened up. Swimming has opened up as well, as did indoor track. Bowling, wrestling, and the boys' basketball and girls' basketball will be opening up either later this week. The home team, home games for the boys' basketball is December 15th and the girls' December 19th. They're on the road to start off, but everything seems to be getting in full swing. So a lot of good things going on and that's all I have at this point.
Mr. Rutske, I heard a rumor, Coach Blake, did she get teacher of the year for track at field? I mean, coach of the year?
I have not heard that. No.
I think I heard she got coach of the year. Couple, couple years, couple.
You mean from like the county or?
From the state.
I, I have not heard that, but I will look into that tomorrow.
Okay. Okay. Are there any questions from the public on agenda items? Please come forward so you give your name, address, and there's three minutes on the clock. Oh, no questions. Okay, great. Thank you. All right, moving right along. May I have a motion please for personnel one through four, including the addendum?
It's one through five.
One through four, one through, yeah, the addendum is number five, yes.
I'll move that.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Any discussion by the board?
None.
Okay. Roll call, Mr. Calavano?
Mr. Charles?
Yes.
Mrs. Lab?
Yes.
Mr. Robertson?
Yes.
Vice President Schwartzbaum?
Yes.
President Mordecai?
Yes. May I have a motion please for curriculum and instruction?
I'll move that.
May I have a second?
I'll second.
Any comments by the board and questions?
Quick question. On the curriculum alignment to NJ Learning Standards, the attachment number seven, there's a whole list of courses, advertising, accounting, business law, marketing, that is appearing under the career, education, and library science department. I thought we also had a business department and that was actually off, had, where some of the business courses were housed along with CTE, the Cisco CTE.
They are, that, that's, there is both.
So is the business within this?
Do you have that?
It just seems odd. And.
Let me just get to the attachment, Mr.. Go ahead, Mr. Mendez.
There are separate courses for the business department. These are the ones that are in the career department that are being updated, just for the record, that they were aligned to the New Jersey Student Learning Standards. We had the Common Core standards. CUSAC requires us to have a board approval specifically with the language that says we have switched from Common Core to Student Learning Standards. So this is a just procedural, formal ask from CUSAC.
I was just wondering because for kids who are interested in business, you have a lot of courses here that are normally considered part of a business department.
Correct. And those may have already been updated. These are the ones who we needed placed on the agenda specifically to state that we have switched over from Common Core to the SLS.
Okay. Only other note is on the digital design and multimedia applications. I know several students who in college or post-college or during college tried to get internships or jobs in the design area. And we have particularly under our, our, the arts department had, had design courses as well. One of the things that they were all missing, and this kind of links up more than one department in a sense, was there was nobody teaching HTML5 or WordPress. And for digital design, particularly when you're going to then translate it into website design, those are two of the leading languages that if they're going to get employed, they would need, definitely need some exposure or some skills in. And some would even say some Java, depending on the type of design. Have we thought about that at all?
I can look at HTML and WordPress. I know we have Java.
Okay.
Yep.
Well, HTML5 is still big too. It just depends on the site.
I'll look into it.
All right. Thank you.
Roll call, Mr. Calavano?
Mr. Charles?
Yes.
I just wanted to comment. One of the items is Christina Bittles applying for a Fulbright scholarship.
Yes.
And we really wish her much success. It's, hopefully she'll get it and it'll be a great achievement.
All set.
Mrs. Lab?
Yes.
Mr. Robertson?
Yes.
Vice President Schwartzbaum?
Yes.
President Mordecai?
Yes.
Ms. Mordecai, before we move on though, just going back to personnel, I know we're getting a little tired, a little punch drunk here. I think it's important to reflect that we've just appointed a new world language and ESL supervisor this evening, Mr. Plata.
Mr. Plata, yes.
Yes, welcome aboard to him. He comes to us from Forsyth.
Forsyth.
Okay. Moving on. May I have a motion please for finance?
I'll move finance, special services, one through three and business, one through 11.
And the business office as well, one through 11.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. May I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion by the board?
Just wanted to comment.
Sure.
Item number 10, that it's a recommendation for approval of settlement agreement between the West Orange Board of Ed and the parent of a former student, that this is a result of the residency hearing where the, it was brought, two students were not residents. The, it was brought to court and as a result, there was a settlement agreement entered into with the parents of these two children who were not residents of the town to pay back the town for the educational services. So it's really a, the residency hearings as well as the registration really have been very, have been successful.
And I would add to that, that this is one of many now in the last two years that we really have gone off after people who do not live here and charge them tuition or getting that money back. So yes, I appreciate the board supporting all of us in endeavor. That, that's an important piece of people who try to move in here and get the education. And to our residency hearings and to our attorneys who are doing all that for us. Very appreciative.
Yes, to the registrar office, yes.
Mr. Rutske, isn't it true that about two, was it 250 folks were found in re-registration or households were discovered in re-registration where they did not live in the district?
Yes, either they didn't live in the district or they were, yeah, they were, had moved somewhere and planning on leaving. There were a host of reasons, but yes, it was around 250 that were discovered and they either left on their cognizant or left because we indicated they were going to pay tuition.
And our new software program has based upon various factors identified 200 potential more who have to be investigated at some level to determine whether or not they should be in district.
Yeah, that's true as well. Some of those are, are turning out to be that they do, but the point is that the, the new program, we do it one time per year and it gives us the feedback to, there's three different levels. And the level one are the ones we go after because there's no matches at all. And we have found some individuals. And again, we're in that process of going after them for that back tuition.
Excellent. Thank you.
Mr. Calavano?
Charles? Yes.
Mrs. Lab?
Yes, but I'll abstain on my reimbursement.
That's right. You're on the bill list.
Mr. Robertson?
Yes.
Vice President Schwartzbaum?
Yes.
President Mordecai?
Yes. May I have a motion please for board reports? One and two?
I'll move that.
May I have a second please?
Second.
Okay. Mr. Calavano?
Mr. Charles?
Yes.
Mrs. Lab?
Yes.
Mr. Robertson?
Yes.
Vice President Schwartzbaum?
Yes.
President Mordecai?
Yes. Okay, now it's time for, for a report from the board members, if anyone has a report to give. Okay. Thank you, seeing none. The next board meeting will be held on December 18th. At that time, we're going to be having quite a bit of student recognitions. We hope to start the meeting a little earlier, the public session, instead of eight o'clock to start it at 7:30, just to make sure all the students have enough time to, to, to be acknowledged. I, I'm not sure yet all the teams that are coming, but I definitely know the, is the track team coming, Mr. Rutske?
All the teams that did well, plus a lot of other individual recognitions will be coming. A lot of students are becoming.
Yeah, a lot of, a lot of the fall teams. Okay. So that's on December 18th and, and also we will be formally recognizing Mrs. Lab at that meeting as well. She's, 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 she's leaving us for greener pastures. Okay. Now it's time for questions and comments from the public. If anyone has a question, please come forward, say your name for the record and address. Mrs. White.
I think I was supposed to do it before, I'm not sure. Sandra White, 16th Findus Road. About the professional development, you were saying that, you know, we talked up the whole special ed thing. Paraprofessionals, am I right that we're not allowed to get tuition reimbursement or like how can we get professional development outside of internal stuff? Can we do external development?
Okay.
As of today, I mean, this wouldn't have been a question for me if it was yesterday, so.
Okay, we'll rerespond at the end. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, seeing none. Mr. Rutske?
Ms. White, first of all, congratulations on your appointment. Second, yes, the paraprofessionals PD is, is done internally when we look at the individual. I know the last couple of years, we've done things on that first day where all the staff come back. And then we've done some other things periodically. One of the pieces we're going to do is look at when the, especially at the elementary in sixth grade, when they have the half days for conferences, that we utilize some of that time to really work, whether it be individually, maybe it's something that there's a, there's a group that's needs some additional ABA training or whatever the training might be, behavioral supports, behavior interventions, et cetera. All that is kind of being discussed right now for the rest of this year and then moving forward.
Thank you. And congratulations, Ms. White. Okay. Thank you, everyone. Motion to adjourn?
I'll move that.
Second.
Thank you, everyone. Get home safe. Have a good night.